All right, I'm going to reconvene the August 6, 2019 special call board meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. Please accept our apologies for being late from executive session. At this moment, we will have a vote on the diploma petition. Sorry. Sir? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to approve the agenda. Can I have a vote to approve the agenda? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Wow, thank you.
I move to approve the agenda for the August 6, 2019 special call board meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Agostini made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Tammy, you'll tell me if it passes, how it passes. All right, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next, we have, now we have executive session items. If I can have a, there's nothing for item 4 dot 1, item 4 dot 2. If I can have a motion on the diploma petition.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the diploma request as presented.
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next, old action, no, old business, no action requested. Dr. Davis, we have a report on the conference center.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Miley will come before us this evening and share an update or report regarding the Richland 2 conference center. Dr. Miley?
Thank you, and thanks for your flexibility and patience for having this moved to this tonight from last board meeting. Give you a chance to review the information. You have the information in your packet. The first slide is kind of a review of what we try to do with the conference center. Provide a premier facility for both district use and community use. We think we're doing that. We try to generate revenues to help us offset some of the costs incurred at the conference center. Some of the things that we do at the conference center are not for fees. We don't charge people, and there are costs associated with this conference center. So we try to generate some fees because if we can offset some of those costs, they're not passed on to the taxpayer. So that's kind of the ultimate goal. And you have it. Thank you. We wanted to try to move in a direction of trying to generate more activity at the conference center and more revenues, and balancing that with reduced use by the in-house district meetings. To do that, we've recommended some of the policy changes. As you see, number one, the policy changes in KFB that we'll have a standalone policy for the conference center. That's on your agenda tonight. We're limiting some of the use of some of the larger rooms to in-house small meetings. We seem to, all of us are guilty of it. It seemed like supply created its own demand, and suddenly we had more meetings. You can ask anybody in the district. My standard comment was, well, where did y'all meet before we had this building?
Yeah.
But nonetheless, we have lots of meetings, and it's very useful. I mean, it's a great facility for those meetings, and some of our departments and their, the people out and the assistants out in the district, they're a large number, so it comes in very handy. But we're trying to limit that so that it has the availability to have outside users. We're applying the practice of trying to have it booked. If an internal department wants to use the facility, we can book them, but they know that if a paying client, a partner in the district, wants to use it, that we will bump them if it's not a district-wide meeting. Now, some of our meetings are not bumpable, like the district, in the state of the district, for instance. Some of our parent advisory, faculty advisory meetings, those kind of things aren't, we aren't going to move those meetings, but an internal department meeting that can be held somewhere else or can be done at a different time, we will conveniently move those. We're implementing a new software package to facilitate additional events and booking them. It's called Event Pro, and Jackie Lee, our director here, will be glad to answer any specific questions about that. If you know me, you know my software skills are challenged. And we're trying to develop, and we've developed a meeting space guide. That is, what we're trying to do is tell everybody in the district that if you have a meeting of four people, here are the opportunities and here are the spaces available for you. If you have a meeting of 12, here are the spaces that are available for you. If you have a meeting of 150, here are the spaces. So we guide people so that they don't go to our onsite, I mean, our online booking system and try to schedule the upstairs for a meeting of four people. So we try to make it easier for everybody to meet if they need to, but make it as convenient as possible to book other events. The next slide is a reminder, this is what we presented to you last time, I believe it was maybe February or March. This were the events that we booked back in 2018 for the calendar year. As we talked about then, we felt like we used this facility extensively. There's roughly, what, 365 days a year, 50 of those are Sundays, so there's roughly maybe 300 days that aren't Sundays, and we held 478 events in this building over the course of those 12 months. And so it's a very, we feel like we're utilizing it as designed, we're making the most of it. As you see, the types of events, we had 46 events that generated fees, $92,000, $93,000. We had 136 district events. Those are things like, we're not going to bump the board meetings, for instance, if a paying client comes along. Those are district events that obviously have priority. Board meetings, community events, school events, and 230 department and district department events. Those are some of the ones we're trying to target and say, let's rethink where we need those meetings to be held. We've had meetings upstairs with 12 people that one of our conference rooms on every floor over here could accommodate. So those are the types of things we're targeting. This year, January 1 through June 30 of 2019, we've had 27 paid events generating $66,000. We've had, again, this is a half a year, so this is, we're still on a pace to have a lot of events in this building. 263 events in six months. If you look back at the previous slide, it was 478 events in 12 months. So we're actually on pace, some of those district and school events are actually on pace to last year. Those are the ones we're going to try to target and slim down a little bit. But actually, we've increased revenues for the six months. That's above what our pace was last year in 2018. Looking at from here to the end of 2019, we've got 22 paid events booked for this year, which a total of about $68,000. So if you look at the first six months of booked and the projected bookings for the rest of this year, that's about $130,000, which is about a 30-something, 30% increase over 2018. So we feel like that's a reasonable pace of growth. We don't want to outpace our ability to provide services. That is, one of the things that we could do is we could market more and book more events, but if we aren't staffed and have the appropriate services to deliver, we don't want to oversell ourselves and end up with a dissatisfied customer. So we think a 30% growth in one year is a realistic achievable growth rate, and we're on that right now. 2020, we've already got 16 events booked for the year 2020, four weddings, two high school proms, six corporate events, and four private party events. And with that, I believe that's the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Board members, questions or comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Dr. Miley, I wanted to know, what do we have in place to generate more funds for use in the building? Because $66,000 is not a whole lot, especially what are we paying out each month or for those months? And have we set a goal for what we would like to bring in for the year?
Well, yes, we have. We hope to break even or even make a positive, and we don't have total year-end expenses. So at the end of 2019, we'll have total revenues and total expenses for 2019, and we'll be glad to report on those. The target is to, in the past, has been to just use the building as much as we can. And that didn't result in the adequate revenue growth. And so that's the plan now, is to do those things we were just talking about in terms of limiting the use when appropriate. Again, there are events that, in the district, that are very important events that we want to hold here, and we feel like that's why this building was built. But we, and so we don't want to shut those down completely just to focus on revenues, which we could, but we don't think that's the appropriate thing to utilize this building. So I don't know whether that answers your question.
Right, but, well, not quite, because you still haven't given me a dollar amount for the goal. So have you and your team gotten together and said, okay, our goal is to make sure that, I know you said break even, but what does break even mean? I would like to see you guys set a goal and then devise a plan of how you plan to get to that goal. Like, do you want to bring in at least $250,000 for the year? Do you want to bring in $300,000? Almost like a thermometer. And let us know where you are and what you're doing. What are some of your marketing techniques that you're using?
Well, and one, I think we'll be, I think Jackie's ready to answer some of those. We don't have, I don't, I personally don't have a goal because, again, we're pushing against some uses that generate no revenues. And so we could set a higher goal for revenues, but we might push aside some activities that really should be here. I think a nice goal is the 30% growth rate that we are going to experience this year. I think a 30% growth rate year over year is a very achievable, aggressive goal, and if we continue to grow by 30%, we will be reaching that $250,000 range in several years with growth that we can handle. Again, one of our big concerns is, aren't my concern, maybe not Jackie's, but is having more activities here than we can adequately service.
Right, and let me just go back. I would still like for you guys to set a goal. Even teachers have to set goals. The superintendent has to set goals, and I'm quite sure his cabinet has to set goals. So I would like to see a monetary goal set for the conference center. What are we bringing in? What are we spending out? Is it worth the time to stay open to midnight? Or is it worth us having these activities or not?
We can do that.
Okay.
I think we can do it. I also would like to say that for the 400 events or whatever that he had on here that we did, it's just two people. So when they initially brought me in, it's just two people to manage all of those events. So when you all saw me the other day, I'm sitting here, I attend every one of those events. So basically, there is no home life, and I'm okay with that. But, you know, the conference center is my heart, so I want to make sure that what we do, we do it right, that we don't have any complaints, and we haven't had any in almost three years, other than, you know, the rooms are a little bit too cold. But other than that, we really have not. And for, I came from the Capital City Club, so you're constantly getting a complaint, a complaint, and complaint. We don't want to end up like that. So this is what we've been able to manage so far. And yes, I do come from a goal-oriented world, but when we sat down at first, we wanted to see, we didn't know what the strengths of this building were, we didn't know what our opportunities were, so now we kind of have a grip on what we can do now. And we are looking at that. We're looking at advertising more, but we, I have an assistant with a small child, like, you got to have home life as well. So I definitely want to keep that in mind. I do want, I do think what you're saying is good. I don't mind a goal and trying to reach it, but I want to also make sure I'm not sick and in the hospital at the end of that year as well.
Okay, one of my final question. With that, it sounds like that we should have added in the budget another person to work at R2I2. That's what it sounds like to me. So maybe that's a conversation we could have later as a board and with Dr. Davis, because it sounds like you need more help. So we can generate more funds.
If we are going to set a high goal, yes, then we would have to have more help. But right now, with what we're doing, two people are able to manage it. But if we keep going higher, then yes, ma'am, we would definitely have to have help, because family is also important to me, and even though my child is older, I do like to spend a little bit of time with her as well.
Okay.
And get out to social activities, you know, to be able to do things. It's a great space, and I invite any of you, come and see some of the things that we do. We are doing some great things. The Northeast really is loving having this space out here and to be able to get out here and have their weddings, and you should see the smiles and things on their faces. So I appreciate everything you all have done for me and to help me to achieve this.
Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, in my opinion, what Dr. Elkins Johnson is alluding to, which I would like to see, is an actual budget for the use of the facility, to know what the expenses are, and to see if we are actually generating revenue and what's costing us the money. I'm glad to see that we are now limiting the usage to some of the facility, because the last time we had a presentation, we were told, and I'm running the numbers through my head, of how much it costs to actually set up a facility to use for a departmental meeting. My question that I asked following up was, do these different departments reimburse the district for the money? The response was, it comes out of the general fund. So no, it's, you know, taking from one pocket to the next. Well, when I left, I thought, I'm looking at these teachers over here, what else comes out of the general fund? Teachers' salaries. So I'm glad to see that we're offsetting it, but what I'd like to see is a budget for the actual use of the facility and also a marketing plan. If we're going to get out there, in my opinion, and I was a marketing major, it's not advertising at this point. It's actually going out and talking to different groups within the community to share with them the facility, and not spending a ton of money on advertising, but actually making sales calls and inviting people in to come and look at the facility.
Solicitation is kind of frowned upon, so a lot of people don't do that, but I do try to get out, when I do get away, I do try to get out and go to different meetings, and I'm always representing the conference center, so I always have my cards. When I was at the hospital with a friend recently, I was talking to the doctors, you know, I'm always talking to people about the conference center. So I really, right now, at this point, can't like join so many clubs that pull me away from here, because, again, I and my assistant are managing all the events that take place in the building.
And I'm speaking about, you know, looking at some of the larger corporations, and I know that you said Blue Cross has held something here, but a lot of these bigger corporations that might need meeting facilities do have event planners that I would expect, would expect somebody, you know, with this type of facility to call on them and visit them. So that's just a suggestion, but I would like to see some type of marketing plan put together to make sure that we do break even, because we are to the point where we should be.
And do know that this is fluid. This is a fluid, these are, so these numbers will rise, because sometimes people end up with a little more money before the event, and they will add things, but sometimes they do have to take things away. So, but we're keeping a very, very close eye on it, and I think you'll be very excited with the Event Pro, because you'll be able to see how many social events, how many corporate events, you'll be able to get a lot clearer picture now. We won't, we won't have, not that there's anything wrong with this, but we'll be able to have charts and different things for you as well.
So what exactly is Event Pro?
Event Pro is an event software that focuses on, you know, like, it's a booking software, so that people are able to go in and book and give us more clear reporting.
So they book without speaking to you? So they go online?
No, of course not. The hospitality business is about, you know, talking to people. So no, they will definitely speak with us. They will go online and book, and then that prompts us to call them and find out more details. Like, if you called me and said, I want to have a luncheon, then you would put in what you had, and then I would call you back and work with you to say, you know, what color linen do you want? It doesn't give you that specific of a thing, but so it.
It's an inquiry, then?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Dr. Miley?
Yes.
In the cost accounting, so when we use the facility as a district staff, previously, most of these events, we would have had to book a facility where we would have paid some amount of money for a lot of these events, right? So we, I mean, we've used the Spring Valley Country Club, we've used other.
Yes, correct.
Facilities when we didn't have room internally to host it. So there is a cost savings associated with our internal use. Is that part of the, is that part of the report that we see? Because, I mean, essentially, even though that's saving money, it is sort of, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know what that term is, but.
Cost-avoiding, yes. It's not involved, it's not included in this report, but we can certainly identify those and calculate those. I think some of those events, we may have had gifted to us in terms of outside venues, but if we ever rented an outside venue, that would be something that we would avoid today.
I mean, I just wondered, from a financial standpoint, you could sort of associate certain rooms, what it would, what that would be in the outside world on average, and use that as a accounting mechanism?
We actually did do that for the internal use of the district for these 470 meetings.
Yeah.
And it was a, it was a pretty staggering number in terms of what, if we had charged the individual departments for the use of those, I think it was around $500,000 of rental fees, that if we had charged all the departments, of course, that would have come out of those departments' budgets.
Right.
It would have been transferring from their use to the use in.
Right, that's right. So I'm not actually asking the charge use department, but I think that cost accounting for us to be aware of, the cost saving, that is just as important as the actual revenue stream, because essentially, that, I mean, it's cost savings, but that is in a way revenue.
We'll be glad to do that. We had, we had assigned a number, but it was such a large number, we thought, well, we're not sure that, but we'll be glad to do that.
Thank goodness I do IT and not, not accounting, so. All right, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Other question. I know when we first opened the conference center, we had an issue with the amount that it would cost for someone to utilize the services, because they had to have, I think, what, half a million dollar insurance policy or something like that?
We do not do that anymore.
So we did away with that.
We, yes, ma'am.
So it seemed like it would have been selling more for people to come in and have events, since we did away with that. So, help me.
We thought it would, but.
Yeah.
Really, I think that, I think you are seeing an increase. In any new business, it's going to be three to five years before you really start hitting the bigger numbers. The first year, I'm going to be honest with you, from like the first six months, I really did not know what the building could do, so we were just kind of hit or miss. So we really only have those last six months' numbers, but every, I feel confident that the pace that we're on, we will continue to see an increase. And, you know, like Ms. Agostini said, like bridal shows and different things like that, we will be getting out to do more of those things now, because I do have a really good right hand now to help me out. So I'm able to get out a little bit, but I want to make sure that there are no problems at any of these events, and a problem can happen like that. So I do need to be here to manage the event, and not micromanaging, because, you know, when you saw me for the party, I sit kind of off to the side, but I do keep a very watchful eye on what's going on.
Thank you for that. So hopefully, we'll have a discussion to get more help at R2I2. Dr. Davis?
Board members, other questions or comments? All right, thank you all very much. With that, we'll move on to 5 dot 2, the proposal for policy revision, KF, Community Use of School and District Facilities. And would you mind if I did 5.3 as well? Can we combine those two? And 5.3, Policy Revision, KFB, Community Use of District Conference Facility. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Dr. Harry Miley and Mr. Will Anderson, who will present to you the information regarding policy revisions to KF, Community Use of School and District Facilities, as well as policy revision to KFB, Community Use of the District Conference Facility.
And we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. We're, the primary thing is generating a separate policy specifically for the conference center, which is KFB.
The only substantial changes to policy KF, which is the one you see on your screen right now, is we've been using the practice of requiring the people to pay for an event before they rent any of our facilities, and so we put that into policy. It's on page 2, Dr. Franklin, right there. A deposit is required at the time of booking an event. The remainder of the rental cost is due 10 business days prior to the event. That is the one major substantial change. The other, the other change is dealing with the tobacco policy that was recently changed that included the e-cigarettes. So that's really the only changes for that policy, and then we, as Dr. Miley mentioned, pulling out policy KFB.
Okay, I've got Dr. Elkins Johnson and then Ms. Agostini.
She had her light on already, yeah.
Okay, my question is, if you go down to facilities, fee schedule, in the fifth paragraph, it says that the district may require organizations to have school staff. Should that be the district will require? Because I know when we have events here, it's required for school staff or Jackie to be a part of it, and it's also required for custodians to clean up. So should that say will or?
Once again, as a practice, we actually do require outside events, but we also put a little bit of leverage, because if it's a, say it's a very small five-person event or something at a school that a neighborhood wanted to use a school for a meeting, and it was five people, and they're not serving food, and it's at 6 o'clock when the custodial staff is already there, then we put that in there to allow the, some, I mean, like what we're, common sense, if we can cover that with, with all they have to do is take the trash out. But if large events, outside events, events that go on a lot at different facilities, you name it, across the district, I think Spring Valley has a stamp show coming up, for example, this weekend, hundreds of people will be there. You have to have custodial for that event. But we're willing to, whatever the board.
I thought you want to make a motion on that, or?
Well, I'm just thinking, whatever the board decides. I just thought that it should be will, because we do provide that, but if not, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Agostini.
A question on the second paragraph of KF, when it says, "Request for Use of District Facilities Must Be Approved by the School Principal, Facility Manager, Chief of Operations." I'm assuming that's Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, we just, yeah.
Okay, but is that your title?
No, but we can change that.
Okay, can we change that to the, okay. And then my second question is, in the same paragraph, that it says, "The Chief Financial Officer Has the Authority to Waive or Reduce Fees for Nonprofit Organizations." When has that been appropriate to use, and when have we done it?
We have done it numerous times for an organization that, for instance, is a partner with the district, a nonprofit, Girl Scout Club, or a nonprofit, help me think of an example.
We've, we've kind of developed a, some parameters of what we would determine would fit into categories. We've realized that one-size-fits-all for a fee doesn't work, so it goes from anywhere for 100%, no reduction if they are purely for a profit or for some organization that's not related to us.
Are they charging fees?
Are they charging fees. For example, if it's some like AAU basketball event that charges their participants and charges fees, they don't get a fee reduction. But say if it's a Boy Scout troop, or if it's an event, I'm trying to think, there's many that come for different things. If they're a district, if they're a state agency or government agency, it may be a 50% reduction.
And I'm familiar with what you're, what you're talking about now, now that you're saying that. But I just do want to state for the record that it does trouble me or concern me, and for full disclosure, I do sit on an education foundation for one of our high schools, but when they call to ask to use the facility, they're very willing to pay for the staffing, but that we charge them a couple thousand dollars to actually use the facility, which is separate from, you know, they're willing to pay for the security, they're willing to pay for, you know, the hired help to run it, which is understandable. But when a education foundation or a PTO wants to use a facility, we're charging them. And just for the, I want that stated for the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other board members, questions or comments? Okay, thank you guys very much. Dr. Davis, item 5 dot 4, update on the meal debt.
One more thing. I'm sorry about that. There's just an inconsistency in the policies. When you're talking about collecting the deposit, on some of them, it says 10 days or the final payment before using it. or the final payment before using it.
Is this policy KF or KFB?
Okay, well, some of them say on KF that you have to pay the deposit 10 days prior, and then on policy KFB, it says, when you got listed, what they have to do seven days before, at least seven-day calendar, calendar days prior to the event, the applicant must deliver the filing to the district, and one of them is, any required rental fees damage the deposits.
The, the reason why they are different, now, we can correct them in terms of consistency, but we treat, we, we, we see them as completely different venues, in terms of the conference center versus using a school cafeteria.
Okay.
So that's why it's different and more detailed for the conference center, because they're larger, mostly, what we're targeting there is fee-paying events like weddings and things like that. So that's why they are different and more detailed.
We've got a dedicated, as, as Ms. Lee stated, a dedicated person who's, is the manager of rentals and facilities. When a school, the principals, they're, they're not really doing anything with that, so we're trying to organize and coordinate 40 different sites with our maintenance and custodial staff, so we just require a little bit more leeway, so we can make sure we have the services in place for these events at schools and other locations. So that's why the, the 10 days.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will now move on to item 5 dot 4, an update on the meal debt. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Miley and Mr. Anderson. We'll share with you the meal, the school meal debt update report for August 6, 2019. Gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving to the first slide, one of the questions is, why, why are we here, and why are we doing something about meal debt? You may have seen various articles in the paper over the country lately. We have substantial, I saw one just recently, I think it was Ory County, they had $50,000 in outstanding meal debt. We've got over $200,000 of meal debt. So we feel like, and what it is, it's revenues, it doesn't go to SEDEXO, it's revenues that this district is not getting to go to our general fund. And again, it is not free or reduced families. We have excluded them from this effort. These are people who can pay, and so we feel like there's, what they do, and some of them owe more than $1,500. So we're, they're sending their children to school, they're eating, and they're not paying their bill. So we felt like it had gotten out of hand, and so we developed a plan, working with Will and his staff and my staff, vetting it with senior staff in terms of the, a strategy of how we'd go about doing it. And our plan was to send out originally three letters, but we decided on four, based on Dr. Davis's insistence that we were going to send out four notices, and so, which is better. We, we want to give everybody an opportunity to pay their bill. We sent out a series of four letters. I think I have the dates on another page, but the first three letters are stating that they owe us money, and we didn't send any letter out to anyone that owed us less than $100, okay? Anybody that owed more than $100 got a letter, and we asked them to please contact us, we have $100, you have more than, $100 or more in school meal, meal debt, and please contact us, we'll be glad to work out a payment, go to this, to this link, and you can pay online. If you feel like you need to apply for free or reduced lunch, go to here. So to give them as much opportunity as possible to pay that, or at least contact us and say $20 a month, $50 a month, whatever, whatever they work. So that was our approach in the first three letters. If we have not heard back from those, those families at all, they haven't called us, emailed us back, written us, or any emailed us or what, if they haven't contacted us after the third letter, we will be sending them a fourth letter. That fourth letter will be going out August 16th. The third letter went out yesterday. And so that fourth letter will be saying, "We have not heard from you in the last five weeks, we've sent you three letters." And, by the way, these families have also been receiving a phone call every Sunday evening if they owe $10 or more.
If, if they go negative, any negative, you get a phone call and an email every Sunday night on Blackboard Connect, saying to state you owe money, and as a parent, I've got that phone call, so, yeah.
So, so, again, we, we wanted to make sure that we weren't surprising people and saying, "Oh, by the way, you don't know this, but we're sending you collections." That was not the idea. So we've notified them every week, we've sent them a series of three letters, and if they don't reply at all, and again, what our office has been instructed to do is, if they contact us, let's work something out. And if we haven't heard from them by August 16th, we will be sending them a letter and saying, "We are sending this to collections." The next slide, we had sent out 939 letters initially, 93 came back with bad addresses. We've got to do something about that between our system in terms of telling us where people live. That's our, our, we will follow up on that. Of those, 197 accounts are paid. We've collected to date $9,137. I'm encouraged that we've collected some, I'm discouraged that that should be a little bit larger number, but we're working on it. As you see, 742 accounts are still targeted for the third letter that will go out tomorrow, and then if we don't hear from them, the fourth letter that's going out in mid-August. The fourth letter will go out August 16th. We're going to work with Libby, not Libby, Abby, Abby, Libby, whatever, Abby Cobb, to work with, with her social workers, to make sure that before we send out any collection agency letter, that there aren't some extenuating circumstances that we don't know about on paper that could affect our, you know, that we shouldn't be sending that letter out. And so we'll work with Abby to identify any families like that, and then we'll see the results of those last fourth, that fourth letter in collection agency and see what our results are, and then we'll internalize this and review our process, because we don't think all the debt's going to be paid, and we'll review this to what we should do next year. So again, we feel like we needed to do something. These are people that are not free and reduced, they're full-paid families, and it's, it's costing us revenues that we could be collecting, that they, that their, their kids are eating, and that we could be using those funds for other purposes. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, I've got Ms. Mackey first, and then Dr. Elkins-Johnson, and then Mr. Shad.
Couple of questions, thank you for the detailed information. Just a clarity question that I didn't think to ask beforehand. Does one letter constitute an entire household, or is one letter being sent per child? Because if you have three children...
One letter per family.
One letter per family.
A family might have multiple children, correct.
So 939 would be 900 families then?
Correct.
Okay. I'm glad to see that if parents contact the district and try to work something out, that, that efforts are being made to try to figure out what the disconnect is.
We will not, if anybody has contacted us, we will not be sending them to collections.
I got you. And the students are still allowed to eat, because, as we know, the parents, the parents pay their bills, not them.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't, absolutely, no.
Okay. And how long has the debt been accumulating? Is this just from one year, or has it been rolling over for a while?
It's been rolling over, so...
Okay.
In a year, we, this past year, we went from 100 and about $70,000 in debt to 250 this year.
Okay.
So we accumulated about, what, $80,000 in debt this one year? So we've got some, a lot of this is just rolling over debt, as Matt.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, Dr. Elkins-Johnson, and then Mr. Shad, and then Ms. Agostini.
Okay, I have a few questions. One is, do you have it categorized by schools and the amount owed per school? Because I think, I would like to see that. I would like to see that. Also, you said no longer collection agencies will be involved. Will we still turn these families over to the collection agency?
If we have not heard from a family at all, on August 16th, after three letters, yes, we will be sending it to a collection agency, unless Abby Cobb comes up to us and says, "No, that family really has these issues, and please don't send that letter," if she comes up.
Or, or if the board meets as a board and have this discussion, because my concern is, we're just now seeing this presentation. I think this is something that should have been brought to the board before we even made decisions on first letter, second letter, third letter, or fourth letter. I mean, we're getting at the tail end, and I think that's something the board should have been involved, or should have heard from you guys much sooner than this. So I would like to see the list per school, and then I would like to know, what have the principals or their assistant principals done at the school level to collect this money? Because it's all about relationships. When I was the after-school director at Pontiac, we had an after-school program over $8,000 in debt. When I took over that program, I built relationships with the families, I was able to recoup that money. So I want to know, schools, the amount, and what have principals or assistant principals or their designated have done at the school level to collect this money? Because it should have never gotten to us. The other thing is, how much did it cost the district for letters number one, two, three, and fourth haven't come yet? So for letters that were mailed, first letters, the second group of letters?
I do not have that tonight. I'll be glad to calculate for you the mailage and the postage and the ink in the paper. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to see that. And, you guys made a statement that it's not for free and reduced lunches, for people who can pay. And I'm not sure what you mean by that, because you can make $100,000 a year and be in $150,000 debt. So are those the people who can pay that you're referencing? Or if you can clarify that for me?
It's anyone who does not qualify for free and reduced lunch. So if they have, they don't qualify, it doesn't matter how much they, their income is, if they don't, their income as a family does not qualify them for a free and reduced lunch meal, then they are quali, they are technically a paid student. They're, they're, they are required to make a full payment for every meal they purchase or eat in the cafeteria. So it could be anyone that makes anything other than, above the, above the federal guidelines. This is all from the federal government.
Okay, I would like to see us reword that, because we don't know what people can pay, because we don't know their income. And one other example I like to say, especially with high school, there are families that qualify for free and reduced lunch, but the kids are too embarrassed to get that. Those are parents who really can't pay, but the parents just did not complete a free and reduced lunch, and they qualify for it. So when we say people who can pay, we need to be very careful about that, because we don't know if they can or cannot pay, and it's obvious they can't pay because they haven't paid. The other thing is, you said that you're sending emails while you're doing that Connect Ed call on Sunday nights. Can we choose a different night? That, that's the Lord's Day and night, if you believe in that. And I just think, we don't need to be barb, barb, whatever it is, partying parents with a call, a debt call on a Sunday night. I just think that's a little disrespectful. So I would love to see you guys consider a different day for that, and, oh, social worker. I think that's a little intimidating to pa, to parents, if you, if they have a debt, and now you want to send a social worker over to their house. I think that's crossing the line.
No, we're not going to send a social worker to the family. What we were going to do is talk to the social worker at the school, and, who knows the families, and say, "Is this family, you know, do you know anything about this family? Should we take them off the list?" So we weren't going to send social workers to families.
But I understand that. But a social worker is not going to know a family unless that family has had some type of crisis, which means it may be a family who has not had a crisis, now you're getting a social worker involved. And I'm just going to say it from a personal letter, that's very intimidating to African-Americans. When you're bringing in social worker, we have to be very sensitive, and we have to understand cultural relationships when we're talking about social worker. I, I think that's very, very intimidating. I think it should be a different approach that we take, instead of getting a social worker involved in someone's family atmosphere just because they owe $50 or they owe $200. And then my final question is, you said these are families that owe over $100. Are you prepared tonight to tell us how many families owe between 100 and 200, how many owe between 200 and 400? Do you have some type of outline that you're prepared to share tonight?
Not tonight.
We've got all the information, but it's, it's a huge database of every school.
We'd be glad to put that together.
Right, and, and that's my, and that's my concern. You have a huge database, you're not prepared, and I know you guys are working hard.
We have, we have every single, I mean, I had a, a person call me today and said, "I hadn't heard a word from anybody, I owe this much money." And I, I told them, I said, "Sir, I've got a response, that you answered a phone call, answered an email, did this and this and this." And he, he just went blank, and said, "Well, I gotta talk to my wife," and he hung up.
Right. But what I'm saying is, you're not prepared tonight for us. I've asked about five questions that you guys said, "Well, let me get back to you." So to me, I'm not saying you're not prepared on your end. You didn't bring information to us to show us that you are prepared, and it concerns me, and it deeply concerns me, that you can't address these questions that I have here tonight, but yet you've sent out letters. I, I...
I, I just want to state, just for the record, before I say this, because I have such a high regard for Dr. Elkins-Johnson and, and what, her as a school administrator, former school administrator, of course, as a board member. But this debt issue has been plaguing Richland School District 2 for many, many years, and so this is not the first time that we have brought before this board information regarding student debt. And, and we've gone through painstaking efforts in the past to ensure that, one, all students are being fed for breakfast and lunch, that then no student is losing or not getting fed. Two, that we do reach out to our parents and ask them that if they are having financial difficulties, to contact us, and whether that reaching out is through email, Connect Eds. These are the methods in which we have, as school districts, to reach out to families, to ask them if they need assistance, is through that. The school social workers at many of the schools are aware of some of the issues that students are facing, that school administrators may not be aware of, as well as school counselors. And so that step of adding a school social worker, and it was, was really so that we would not embarrass or hurt or hinder a family, so that they may be able to give us insight. That's just one preventive step before we go to that. I did ask the staff to add a fourth letter before we send something out, but if we continue down this road of, of, of losing this, this money, to, what's going to be the number that we're going to be comfortable with, with stopping and asking people, asking the families who are full-paid families to pay their portion of the debts? We could possibly, with this type of revenue, have some, begin to have some conversation on, how then do we re-divert some of that funding to ensure that if we wanted to go to a full, free-for-all lunch or program, we may be able to do that if we're able to recoup some of this money that we're not getting from, from those individuals who are, who are able to pay. Many of the students who are collecting debt, if we did a cross-reference check for them who have free debt, they also pay their athletic fees, they pay their band fees, they're able to participate in, in different and other activities around the district. And so the reason why this wasn't brought to the board with all, from my perspective, was that we did not think this was a board issue. As far as our job was to make you aware of the processes that we were taking, but this was an administrative task that we were, that we have to recoup lost revenue from the school district, and so we devised a plan to recoup that lost revenue, and then provided the board with the information regarding that. However, you know, of course, as superintendent we serve, and as district administration, we serve at the pleasure of the board, and thusforth, if the board wants to, wants to, us to come up with a plan and have a workshop on how we will recoup lost revenue from full-paid families, then we will, of course, will take our directions from the board, but we would need some clarifications of what things would constitute that, because we send, we send out letters or try to collect debt for other things that are not necessarily related to lunch. I got a debt for a AP art history book, that's $100, that's sitting in my daughter's bedroom underneath her bed. Today, when we paid fees, that debt was sitting on there, and so we were told that you have to pay this debt. I, I got the bill. They didn't even bother to send me a letter, notify me that that debt existed, so I need to get the book to the school tomorrow. Mary Page, I'll get you that book back. But...
And through these efforts, the schools... Us and said, "What are y'all doing? Because we're getting more uniforms and more books returned than we've ever seen in hi, in our history, so..."
Collecting these revenues allow us to do the, some of the things that we need to do, and, and not have to incur these unnecessary expenses. It is a difficult, a difficult task, and I applaud what Dr. Elkins-Johnson said, and her relationship with her families, to be able to pull and recoup some of that, recoup all of those funds from her, from her, her school and from her program. I do, would like for, after we've had this, to have some clarifications, because specifically, there were a number of things that were asked. One is a list of, of, from every principal, what he or she is doing, which is roughly about 40, 40 different things that may be going on, but what we could do is provide protocols and guidelines... But what we could do is provide protocols and guidelines for how to collect debt as a school district as opposed to asking each individual principal from what they're doing, which will go along with our goal of being more, having a more consistent practice across the district that the board has tasked me of doing.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I appreciate that. And you did address some of my questions, but I would still like to get the request that I asked for earlier. And then I just want to address one thing that you said. And with all due respect, you made a comment about parents are not paying their dues, but they're paying athletic fees and they're paying that. And that may be true, but that's not our concern. And that really bothers me because I've worked in schools where teachers have said, oh, parents are getting their nails done and getting their hair done and paying for designer shoes, but they are not paying for field trips. So what? That has nothing to do with what we're talking about now. So we need to be careful about making those statements and those comments, very, very careful. Because just because our priorities may be in place, we have parents who have not had that training or had those professional friends or had those professional colleagues that can help them do that. So their priorities may be totally different than ours. And that's not our place to decide what they pay for and when we pay for it. So that disturbed me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shad.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. To the first page, the debt is almost $242,000. But you're trying to collect $218,000 of that. What's the reason for the difference?
Push your button for the mic.
So it's the, again, if they owed less than $100, we don't try to collect it. So there's a certain amount of debt, and again, we can get that total by amounts. There's a certain amount of debt that a family owes $42, and we're saying, we're not going to send you to collections. We're not even going to try to, you know, hopefully they'll pay it. But so that's a certain amount of that money. And then there's some debt that is owed by free and reduced eligible families that incurred debt before they became eligible. And so they technically were a paid family, but then they became eligible for free and reduced. We said, fine, we're not going to make, go back and try to collect that because you clearly were eligible, you just hadn't done the forms yet. So that's part of that also.
Okay. And is this something that, this is new? This debt collection process?
This whole process is new, yes, sir.
Okay. And you, how far back did you go to capture the old debt, just from when they first started in the district?
They've, we've, I mean, the process of sending these letters is new. The district actually used to send collections for debt.
Immediately?
We did.
We used to. And there was, and.
I'll tell you the reason why we stopped. What happened was our system at that time is a family got a letter for collection. Once it's sent to collections, it's out of our hands. So what happened was that person got a debt collection letter and went, ah, I gotta go pay this. And they'd go to the school and pay. The problem was, is that doesn't satisfy the collection agency. And so at the school site, the system that we had in place, there was no way of that bookkeeper or anybody knowing that they shouldn't have collected that money. Because once it's sent to the collection agency, we shouldn't be collecting the money. The collection agency collects. And so we stopped because there was so much confusion. Families were paying the school and then having to pay the collection agency, and it was a mess. So we said, until our system's better. And we finally got a better system. So now what we can do is, we can go to the school site in the software and say, we're taking, you owed $152? We're sending you to collections, but we're zeroing it out to school, so you can't go pay it at the school anymore.
Okay.
The positive is they now have a zero balance with the school. So there's us and the parents and the family, we're good, we're zero, you're, it's with that. But all the notifications that have gone before this, the phone calls and all that, that's been going on for a long time. So these families who've had a debt accruing over many, they've been getting these, and we just haven't had a, I guess, we've never had, for the past several years, something to really, we say, we're gonna, you can't do this, you can't walk across the promotion. But there's really been nothing for a family because we haven't denied them a meal. So they've been just continuing, I mean, not all families, but I'm just saying, that's just, this allows us now at least to give us a little bit of weight to say, hey, we really, we're not getting that rep.
And the, they have to have a zero balance on their meals in order to receive a diploma or to walk, right? To graduate?
We don't, we do not withhold a diploma. One of the things is we don't allow them to walk. But I know schools and principals work very hard with those students to come up with some kind of plan so they can do something, so they don't, I mean, maybe Mr. Price can speak more to that, but I don't think there's very many incidents where a kid has not walked, not that I'm aware of.
That's correct, Mr. Shad, that we will not withhold a diploma if there's a debt owed. Sure. But at all high schools, one of the check-offs that seniors have to do is to show that they've cleared all fees. And if they haven't done that, then they're not given their ticket to graduation until they have either satisfied their outstanding debt or worked out some kind of plan with the school's administration.
Okay. So it's safe to say that the majority of this are folks who are rising seniors and below? Because that debt would have either been taken care of or there's some plan in place?
Our highest amount of debt is quite honestly, there are middle schools. Our middle schools is the highest, and the trends are because that's their first years of being able to have more options, and they can get pizza every day. So we have the highest participation rates in middle schools. And so those children who may have brought their lunch every day or something in elementary schools are now eating pizza every day, and they're just, I mean, I'll be honest, they might not even be telling their parents they're eating lunch every day. I don't know for sure, but that's our highest debt because that's also our highest participation. We don't see as much in high, we don't see as much in high school. But it's middle, elementary, and then high school is what would be how the levels work out.
Okay. And I have two requests, Dr. Davis. One is just to see a copy of the letter that was sent. I'm assuming they're about the same. Is that right?
Yes, we're glad to.
Well, at least one of the first three and then the fourth letter, what that looks like.
Okay, be glad to.
I'd like to have that. And also, of course, not any names, but if you could provide me with the, and any others, with the schools and the amount of debt associated with those schools, just on elementary and the middle school level.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Agostini, and then I've got Dr. Holmes.
Has it been clear, clearly stated how long this debt for the meals has been accruing?
It's from current students. So I guess we, I don't know right this minute how long, but it's from current students. So I guess it could be any.
Some students have been racking up debt since they were a kindergartner and they're in high school now.
So five years, seven years, eight years, and at this point we've done nothing, basically?
We tried, but we haven't really had any reason to do anything to them.
And I would like to encourage Dr. Davis, and I'm glad that he suggested it, but establish some protocol at the school level. And I'm going to give an example of what happened to me. Last year, in 2018, I received a bill from the district of $500 from my high school daughter who had graduated in 2016. I received a $500 bill for outstanding books. And if the principal had called me in 2016, I might have been able to say, she's turned them in. But two different departments did not communicate, and I received a threatening letter from the district saying that we were going to collections if I didn't return books that my daughter had returned two years previously. So I'm wondering about, you know, what type of communication and sometimes the accuracy of this data. But I'd like to see some protocol done at the local level where the principal or some employee calls so you can get it straightened out sooner rather than later. And that you can stop the kid from getting pizza every day because they're bringing their lunch, but they want the pizza. The parents can at some point talk to the kid and say, no more of that.
We do have in our student handbook, and it's been in the student handbook for a while about the debt, and I just actually updated it for Libby today, is the cafeteria manager sends letters, they work with the school, and then the cafeteria manager doesn't get a response, the process is, and then work with the principal. So there is an established process. We need to, as Dr. Miley and y'all have mentioned, we really need to get back on that process and make sure that everyone is following our current process of how to make sure we don't get to this level. Yes, ma'am. Your best, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Holmes?
Yes. I heard you state earlier that about the social worker, but there is a point of interest that I want to point out about that. In most schools, especially when you're talking about high school or middle school, the social worker generally only works with those families that she's been assigned to or the issue arises. So if you're just asking the social worker, like just asking her, do you have, do you know anything about this particular student? They may not know anything unless about any of the other students that don't have a particular situation that has arisen or somebody has pointed them out for social work. What I'm thinking also with that is, is that you could utilize your guidance counselors who also have a caseload. Each guidance counselor has a caseload of every child. I think that you would find it more efficient to use your guidance counselor as opposed to your social worker who may not know the children specifically. I think that you might need to rethink that because, as you're saying, and also, the other thing that came to my mind when I thought about that was, and I'm glad that it was asked by Dr. Elkins and Mr. Shad about the letter. If on the letter it states that one of the options before it goes to collection, and I haven't seen the letter, so I'm asking, but if it does not, maybe perhaps you have on the option, instead of relying on the social worker or the counselor, it states on the letter that you have an option to call in and speak with a specific person about if there's a specific situation. And that way, that gives them anonymity to be able to speak freely about what's going on, and that's going directly to the source as opposed to relying on a secondary source to find out if there's an issue.
I just pulled the letter up right now, and it's got to call the school, it's got our food service bookkeeper's number, book account number, and to call. So it's a lot, it's very, I don't even think it mentions about going to collections. It's all about, it doesn't even mention the word collections, it just talks about how we want to make sure you have a debt and we need to.
No, but what I'm referring to is, we don't want it to get to that fourth letter or the third letter. What I'm saying is that we need to add that upfront, and that way, that gives them an additional option as to ways that they can establish how to get out of, before it goes to collection. You need to put that up front and not on the back end. And then if it is on the back end, again, as I stated earlier, the social worker is not going to know every child, but a guidance counselor is assigned a caseload specifically. So they would know the children. And even if at that, in eliminating that, if it's on the letter, it gives the parent the option to do that themselves without having to go through a third person to tell their business to. So that's what I'm saying. You give people their options up front, and then you let them decide how it's going to be best run for them.
We'll share the letter so you can see them and see how that, how it's worded. I may have just misspoke, but you'll see it, and you can, we'll be happy to follow up. It's good suggestions.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see that on the letter.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Just one other question. For high schools, what's the protocol that's put in place for high school returning books? I know when I worked at the high school level, all the kids had to do was just come and dump their books in one of the grocery store carts, and then later someone would go and scan, which could be a case where books are missing because some kid walked by and just took some books, just to be funny. So what's the method with that now?
Dr. Elkins Johnson, I'm sorry, I don't want to be rude here. This is a report on the one area. I think the district will be happy to answer that question, but I want to try to stay on topic because we have a lot of other things we need to discuss tonight.
Well, this is relating to this because it could be someone who's gotten a fee for books.
Well, but I think this is specifically about food service, not about books. I think that Dr. Davis is correct. I think we should maybe look at holistically a policy on how we address these issues as far as debt collection, so there's consistency, the board's aware of the process, and we can then shift this to an administrative function once the board's approved the mechanisms by which the district can rec, can collect and deal with the issue. Because I, I mean, I just feel like we're, I think that's the level where we need to be as a board. I think it's appropriate to consider a policy on this. I'd like for us to move on. I'd like for your answer to be, your question to be answered, but I just don't, at this time, I'd like for us to move on to the next topic.
Well, that's fine if they can just get an answer back to me on this question.
Most, really quickly, most of the books, all the books have barcodes on them now. It's not like it used to be. So a student has a barcode that's assigned to the book that's then assigned to their ID. You scan the barcode, you scan the ID. But when they check the books in, they come in and hand the book in to the person who's over books, he then scans the ID and scanned the book back into the system.
Dr. Davis, I know that, but my point is, you can go and drop your book in the cart.
No, no, you can't drop it in the cart. You have to go in and turn it in, right. You have to go in and turn it in into the, into the person who's the administrator over the books.
Okay. Thank you all very much for that report. We have item six dot one, instructional goals and learning objectives. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Ms. Nancy Gregory, who is going to stand before you this evening and provide a policy revision to, with no action requested, for instructional goals and learning objectives. I'm sorry, this is not a policy.
This is a policy.
Policy IA, instructional goals and learning objectives. I apologize, Ms. Gregory.
Good evening. We are going to, you have a packet with section I, part one. The School Board Association changes on the policies in your packet are in red. The changes by district staff are highlighted in yellow. And we are going to begin, as Dr. Davis said, with policy IA, instructional goals and learning objectives, philosophy of education.
And I'm sorry, board members, any questions or comments on policy IA?
IA.
Dr. Holmes?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you did. Okay. Policy IB, academic freedom. Dr. Davis? Sorry. Ms. Nancy Gregory? Any questions?
Wait one second. IA.
IA.
Ms. Agostini, did you, you had one on IA or IB?
No, for IB. Are we on IB? Oh, okay, that's what I was asking. And I'm just, I thought that Mr. Shad had brought this up previously. Are we calling them teachers or instructional staff? Are we going to be consistent or is that not a bother?
It's not a bother for me, but if it's an issue with, if it's a bother for the board, we make a motion to change it from teachers to instructional staff or instructional staff to teachers, and then we'll make an effort to go back through policies and make sure that it is consistent throughout the policies in our policy manual.
I was actually looking for a board opinion, and, and I, no, I won't make a motion if everybody's fine with it, but I'd like to stick with either one or the other.
No, I'd like for us to be consistent because that's what the policy's been thus far.
Okay, if I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we change the reference to teachers to instructional staff.
For all policies.
For all policies.
Okay, motions were made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Discussion? This is mean that we will go through all of the policies, hundreds of all the policies, and do a unilateral change to one or the other?
I believe that's what the recommendation was for.
To do?
Yes.
Just one clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or question? At this time, if we can have the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh.
One, two, three, four. All right, all opposed. All right, motion passes four to three. Okay, any others on academic freedom?
I have a question.
Okay.
Also, it says in the third paragraph at the end, what's added, through lesson plans or other means, teachers will consult with the administration on the appropriateness of discussing controversial issues with students. Who defines what is controversial?
There is a policy on that that says that, uh, we must make teachers, it's called the question, the question.
All right, any other questions or comments on policy IB?
Sorry.
Okay, if we can move on to 6 dot 3, ID, school day. Any questions or comments? Policy IE, organization of instruction. Any questions or comments?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
ID.
ID, okay.
This is new to me. I didn't realize that this was in the policy, but, Ms. Gregory, might I understand that we actually have a mandatory moment of silence?
Yes, that is in, actually, section 59, 1, 4, 4, 3. It is in South Carolina code. And it's at the beginning of the day. And you'll see that cited in the legal references.
Do you know if we're in compliance with that state law?
Yes. As far as I know, that in every school, when you do the pledge of allegiance to the flag in the morning, you follow it with a moment of silence. Our teachers in the, is that true?
Yeah.
Let me make sure I understand. It's mandatory that the school allow for it to happen. It does not necessarily mean that every student is complying with that mandatory moment of silence. I got you, I got you. And I'm sure some of our, I'm sorry, our instructional staff, in many more cases, would like for them to remain silent, but they don't necessarily do that. But it's okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions about policy ID? All right, policy 6 dot 4, IE, organization of instruction. Questions or comments? Policy 6 dot 5, IG, curriculum development, adoption, and review. Questions or comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, on, was the back page for me, so I'm not, yes, if you go to that last page. And my question is, what about related arts and election, electives? Are they approved by the board? Because it said, "Administration will not eliminate courses or add new courses without approval of the board." So does that relate to related arts as well as electives? Right. Okay, so only the core courses. So it doesn't have anything to do with electives or anything? Okay, okay, I just want it to be clear. Thank you.
Any other questions on 6 dot 5, curriculum development, adoption, and review? Item 6 dot 6, IHA, basic instructional program?
I have one other for, which one are you on?
We were, I just left 6.5, the IG, curriculum development, adoption, and review is what I just left.
I'm looking at.
Okay, so I'm now moving to 6 dot 6, IHA, basic instructional program.
Right, I do have a question.
Okay, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Just on the second page, if you come down to C, and it says, State Board of Education.
Hit your mic, Dr. Elkins.
Oops, sorry. When it comes to the second page, C, right there. Just, yes, just to be consistent, you've put K through 5 and spelled it out, grade 6 through 8 spelled out. Now you have grades 9 through 12, and you have the number 12. But in the other policies, you have 12 spelled out.
We'll check into that, because we did make a note, Dr. Franklin owned those, and it may be because, and I'll go back and check, I have copies of the defined minimum program with me. It may be the way it is worded, but we will certainly check.
Okay.
Because we've made a point to be consistent with that. So thank you for calling that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on IHA, basic instructional program? Item 6 dot 7, I, Dr. Miley, you have a comment? I'm just kidding.
He's choked off.
6 dot 7, I, I'm sorry, we needed a moment of levity. 6 dot 7, IHAA, English reading, writing, language arts education. Any questions or comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson and then Ms. Agostini?
If you come down to almost the last paragraph, where it talks about, "In addition, schools will provide instruction in cursive writing to ensure," and it goes on. My question is, are we teaching cursive writing? Are we back to teaching cursive writing?
We are, we're required.
And also, since that is a third grade standard, can we insert third grade in third grade? Where it says, "In addition, schools will provide instruction in cursive writing in third grade to ensure students can create," and moves forward.
Yes, that we insert "in" third grade, because that's a third grade standard.
The reason it is there, you're right, it is taught, but it is a law. It was part of the Ba, Back to Basics Education Act that cited in 2014, and the law states by the end of the fifth grade.
Right, I know what the law says, but cursive writing is a third grade standard. So are we requiring the third grade teachers to teach it? Because if, I guess my question would be, if we're just saying they have to have it by fifth grade, then you could have one third grade teacher teach it, and then they don't get it again until fifth grade. So are we going to say that third grade, because that's, that was one of third grade standards, and then they removed it, then they placed it back, then they removed it?
I've asked Mr. Newton.
Yes, I think when the, when they reinstated the law, it's progression over time throughout their elementary years. I don't think it's specific for third grade. I can actually check, but it's, they begin to teach certain letters prior to third grade, and it's progression throughout elementary school.
It builds.
Okay, again, that could be so confusing, because if we're saying, well, I want to get clarification, I want to make, get clarification before I do that. And I guess, as a district, what do we want to say? Do we want to say up until fifth grade, or do we want to include that in third grade to ensure that it's, it has been taught since it is a third grade standard? Because I, I guess I'm afraid that you might have one school teaching cursive writing in third grade, then another school's not teaching it, and then the kids transfer, and they feel like they're behind because they haven't learned it.
So, Dr. Elkins Johnson, you're making a motion that we insert?
No, he's getting, Mr. Mann, slow, slow your road. He's getting ready to answer my question first. Then, based on his answer, I'll let you know if I need to make a motion.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate, I don't think it's a third grade standard anymore.
In standing, we'll go back and look. I don't think it's a standalone.
Okay, so it's no longer a standard, it's just a requirement to have it by fifth grade?
Yes.
And can you guys provide that in writing to us?
Sure, I'll, I'll take.
Okay, so now I don't need a motion if that's, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, I'm sorry, Ms. Agostini.
And I was going to say, my question was very similar to Dr. Elkins Johnson, and it was answered.
So you addressed, okay. Any other questions on 6 dot 7, IHAA? All right, 6 dot 8, dot, wow, southern accent, 6 dot 8, IHAB, mathematics education. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes.
On which one?
That one.
On 6 dot 8, IHAB, mathematics?
Oh, okay, Mr. Newton, you may have to get back up again.
We're going back to IHAA, 6 dot 7.
No, no, IHAB.
Okay, so that's where we are. I, 6 dot 8, IHAB, mathematics education. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Okay, my question is pretty similar to the question for cursive writing. I see that it says that, "In addition," is on the last page, "In addition, schools will require students to memorize multiplication tables to ensure that students can effectively multiply." Okay, back to that. What grade level is that standard? Same question as before, because I know what grade level it should be. So what's the new law?
It actually depends on.
Right. Okay, so can we insert third grade in it? If so, then I'll make that motion that we inquire the students to memorize multiplication tables in third grade to ensure.
Okay, is that your motion, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I would like to have "in" third grade inserted.
Do I have a second? Motion fails. Any other questions for IHAB?
Really, really.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, but it's, and it's exactly related to what Dr. Elkins Johnson says, because it, it doesn't say that, it doesn't state when it's taught. It says that they need to master it by. But that's my question. What happens to these skill, the students that haven't mastered these skills?
Just to answer that, that would not be addressed in board policy of when something is taught. There are very few, or when they need to master those things. Those would not necessarily be addressed in board policy. The standards, the state standards would tell us when we should teach a particular standard or indicate a learning by grade level, but you would not see those things reflected in a school board policy, because the standards are fluid and they change. And if those standards change, or subject matters come out of those things, then you would have to then readdress your policy. Now, as a district expectation or practice, we can have certain things in place about what we would like to do, or when we would like to see mastery of certain things by a certain time. For example, in the update that I provided with the board, the goal is to make sure that all 11th graders can take, will be ready to take Algebra II by 11th grade, or all students will be prepared on grade level in mathematics by third grade, and by, and in reading by third grade, which goes to actually address Dr. Elkins Johnson's question about mathematics, in order for them to be prepared for, to be on grade level in math in third grade. They would need to be ready to be able to master the multiplication tables that a third grader is supposed to be able to master at that time.
Okay, thank you. Again, do I have any, any other questions, comments regarding policy IHAB, mathematics education? Policy 6 dot 9, IHAC, social studies education. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
And please forgive my ignorance if I'm wrong on this, but the second line on the first paragraph, we're talking about social studies education, but is that just a certain term of art, state science, arts standards?
That is a typo, where it says, "Science, arts standards."
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Whatever it should be, that's my motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're talking about social study standards, so.
So the motion is to remove the science and put in social studies? Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? If I can have all in favor, right hand, all opposed? Anybody abstaining? Dr. Elkins Johnson, did you raise your hand?
I support.
Okay.
So passing unanimous, thank you, all right. All right, IH, 6 dot 10.
Science.
6 dot 10, IHAD, science education.
Excuse me, I'm still on, I have a question or two on the social studies education.
Social studies, okay.
Just under the Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, do we actually do this on September 17th?
Yes.
It says each year.
It says September 17th.
Thank you. And then my next question is, when we flip the page for Veterans Day, on the school day immediately preceding November 11th, if schools are closed on Veterans Day, do we, I want to say we don't strictly adhere to that policy, or is it new, because I know that I've been invited to numerous Veterans Day functions that are a week, a week long?
Well, they may go on, but they.
Well, no, but it says that it's supposed to be done immediately preceding November 11. To me, that sounds like the following day.
If I remember correctly, we made this change or updated it. I'm looking to see, adopted 2017. So it is a change from how it was previously worded.
Okay, so our schools will be informed that they have to do it immediately proceeding. Thank you.
That's a fairly recent change.
Okay. All right, Ms. Agostini, was that, okay. So, yeah, Dr. Elkins Johnson, still on social studies?
Yes, I just wanted, the people right there.
Yes, thanks for catching that earlier, because like I said, we've tried to go through these documents for consistency and do that, so thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, all right, policy 6 dot 10, IHAD, science education. Questions or comments?
Policy 6 dot 11. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is Justin, I'm going to make a motion that in the second paragraph, the second to the last line, where, just to scratch the words "the" and "to" under, and I'll read the whole sentence. "The science program is designed to promote the development of skills, concepts, and attitudes which help students discover, interpret, and control natural phenomenon." And I've deleted the words "to" and "the," "to students to discover."
Hmm, sorry, I got lost.
It's, it's just grammatical.
So the si.
Okay, I'm, it's the, so it'll be the third sentence. "The science program is designed to promote the development of skills, concepts, and attitudes which help the students to discover," which helps students discover, interpret, yeah. No, not "will," but just remove the words "the" and "to."
I got it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chair, if we can have a little discussion.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Ms. Agostini, if you could please read it as you want it to be read in full.
Okay. But it makes sense now. Is that just a grammatical preference? Because it makes sense as it reads. Is that just? Mine was a grammatical preference. I think we're adding a lot of "the's" to our policies. Just, just for, it's not grammatically incorrect, though, but your preference, it's not incorrect.
Okay, so motion's been made. I have a second. Do I have further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All, all right, all against, raise your right hand. All nay? Motion fails, four to three. Other questions or comments? All right, 6 dot 11, IHAF, arts education. Other questions or comments? 6 dot 12, IHAG, music education. Questions or comments? Policy 6 dot 13, IHAH, world language education. Questions or comments? Policy 6 dot 1.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini?
And I'm just looking, is it called a world language?
It is now. That's the correct terminology and what the State Department uses.
Okay, and they refer to it with the word "a" in front of it. The district will offer a world language as an elective.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Policy 6 dot 14, IHAJ, computer slash technology literacy. Policy 6 dot 15, IHAK, character education. 6 dot 16, policy IHAL, religious instruction. 6 dot 17, policy IHAN, driver training.
Mr. Chair, do we actually have drivers' training?
No, in fact, I wanted to, we left this in here. We debated what to do, but actually, there is what is called a continuing proviso of note every year, and it, it says, "This continuing proviso suspends the requirement for high schools to provide a driver education course and remains unchanged." So this is something that we get from the School Board Association every year, that the legislature has a proviso, that again, it's called a continuing proviso of note. So the answer is no, we don't.
Ms. Agostini, do you have a?
Well, I'm confused, because we've got a continuing proviso, but we're being asked to approve a policy that to approve a policy that we're not going to actually implement. Is that correct? If I can speak, Dr.
Oh. So I got this, Dr. Holmes, and then.
I'm sorry, Dr. Holmes.
Did that answer your, do you?
No, that's my question. So we've got a proviso that we don't have to do it, but we're being expected to implement a policy.
Ms. Mackey says she has a clarification on that.
The continuing proviso is not necessarily every year. The continuing proviso means that they're going to address it every year. So it may, so it may or may not say what it says right now every year, it's a proviso. So it has to be voted on and rewritten or addressed every year. So it may not be as it is right now, by virtue of it being a proviso.
She is correct. And that's why we debated what to do with this one and decided to leave it in, knowing that it's a year to year. And that we know that there is a proviso.
Is it possible? Is it possible, I guess, to get it included in here? Because if I'm a parent looking at this, and I was, and it wasn't offered to my children, and I'm reading this policy, that if you've got parents reading it, it says the state mandates that every secondary school offer a complete program of driver education. We're not doing that. How can we work with this policy to say that we're not doing it, or that we don't have to?
Can I?
Mr. Manning.
Dr. Holmes might have some clarification as well. Dr. Holmes?
Not clarification for all that, but I do have a question. My question is, why are we not offering driver's ed? Because I know that it is usually a mandate of state, so why are we not offering it in the district? Because I know for parents, and I've had a couple of people actually answered, asked me that question, because I know it saves parents money on their insurance when we offer driver's ed. So I'm just curious as to why we are not offering it.
I don't know the history behind, or would we stopped offering driver's ed? Mr. Price may know, or Dr. Davis, so.
Yeah, as soon as the state stopped the requirement or suspended it with the proviso that we had to offer it, then we suspended it because of the costs associated with offering. At that point, I believe it was four high schools instead of five, and offering four driver's ed programs throughout with the cost of the vehicle, the training, the insurance that goes along with it, and the number of students who were actually participating in the class, although it was offered, it was rarely full, because so many students and families were taking advantage of other driver training companies in the community to get that. And so the cost, the limited number of participation, and the no longer being required by law, the decision was made at that time.
How long ago was that, Mr. Price?
Prior to 2010.
Okay, I think, I think that.
Does it have, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Holmes, does it have the, the date of the original proviso for the, for the restriction?
In fact, it has here 2017, 18, but I had the manual from last year.
September 11?
The recession after September 11 was when a lot of school districts cut it. I was in another school district at the time, and that's when the funding and all was pulled, and that's when a lot of them, so that was back in 2007.
Well, I, this is what I'm thinking. I'd like to perhaps, we may need to relook at that as a board, because I know the demographics of the district have changed a whole lot, and a lot of people can't afford the private lessons for the driver's ed classes, because they're quite expensive. I think that, I mean, I think that we should definitely maybe go back to addressing that and see what the cost would be, especially if we have surplus money that we can do some things with, because I think it would be a great service to the parents and the students, since I have a lot of parents and students ask me that question. We may not have had a necessity back then, because it might have been a little different with the demographics, but I think that that's something that we absolutely maybe need to look at, or at least address again in the future. Because I think, I, I don't know if we need to keep doing the proviso of not offering it, when I think that we have a district that could be, could benefit from offering driver's ed to the kids.
Dr. Holmes, that would be a perfect thing for our budget priorities, when we issue budget priorities for the district, to make that recommendation at that time.
Either budget priorities or when we get the surplus money. So either one. We are, we are going to get surplus money, so that would be a good time to address that also. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's only one time money, though.
Money, money.
All right, so do we have any other questions on IHAN, driver training? All right, IHAO, environmental education. Six dot one eight. Six dot one nine IHAP, consumer education. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
In the second paragraph, it states that all district schools will conduct instructions and consumer education in conjunction with courses. What courses are you referencing? Because basically, consumer education is home economics, which is family consumer sciences. So we're saying that all schools will conduct that?
We do have economics in high school, and also Ms. Boyce, through some of your KATE courses, it's also integrated through KATE.
What course is, is that?
Economics.
No, no, economics or home economics?
No, the economics course.
So the economics course will fill in for the consumer education?
It, consumer education is part of that course.
Give me an example, I'm a little confused.
Supply and demand is one example. Dr. Manning, you're going to address.
But that's not, that's not family and consumer science.
This is consumer education. Previously, it was embedded in our K-12.
So like consumer.
Consumer education, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Embedded in our K-12 social study standards, and it still is, and with our revised standards that will go into effect in August of this year.
Okay.
The state has required greater influence of consumer education to ensure that students don't make poor financial decisions. So this is about financial education.
Got you now, I was confused.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In K-2, it's embedded with economics and supply and demand, even in 3-5, the taxes and supply and demand.
And then the other question is, throughout, to be consistent, we said all schools, but here it says all district schools.
Okay, that's a good.
So should we remove district?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we making a motion to remove?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we remove district to be consistent.
Can I have a second to that motion? Seconded by Dr. Holmes, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All in favor, okay. All opposed, raise your right hand. Anybody abstaining? All right, motion passes. By the way, my computer says I have 10%, so when that dies, the meeting's over. Just saying. All right, six dot two oh IHBA, special education programs for students with disabilities. Six dot two one IHBB, gifted and talented education.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I'm just looking at the first paragraph on the IHBB, and then it's like the, the last sentence, I think you just missed a "the" where it's stricken. And maybe, maybe it's just from my hard copy, I can't see from up there. The board therefore requires, it's just a stranded "the." Is it up there? Okay. I'd like to move that we remove the word "the."
All right, motion's been made to remove the word "the." Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any discussion?
Can you tell me the place again? Just clarification is where you want to remove it? Thank you. Can you see it now? Yeah, I've got my notebook, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, passage unanimous. All right, any other discussion on IHBB? All right, six dot two two IHBC, programs for at-risk slash disadvantaged students. Questions or comments? Six dot two three IHBA, instructional services for limited English proficiency students.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
First of all, from what I'm looking at, it shows that the English is up there twice. And then I have a question about the usage of EL, ELS, and, well, no, not, not what the program is, but what are we using? Because sometimes it says EL on this, it's inconsistent in the policy, whether it's EL with a small s, EL should, sometimes it should, like, for example, in the second paragraph, ELs to me, students, there should be a possessive there?
English language is the, the term, English learners, that has replaced LEP, so that's correct. But what you're saying is, in some of them, it has the plural with the S added on and the others. So what you're asking is for consistency there.
Yes. And then if you look at the second word, it has students with a quotation mark. On the, the, the second paragraph, it says ELS students, and then it's got a quotation mark.
And, yeah, that is not consistent either, and I, it was the first, no, it didn't the first time.
So if somebody could just go through and look.
Yeah, I don't know why the State Department did that.
Pardon me?
I don't know why that was done.
Okay, but so, and then I do want to make a recommendation, too, a motion for the, on the first line, that says, "The board believes all students, including those with English learners, should receive a high-quality education within the district." I would like to change "those with" with the word identified. To me, it sounds like you're diagnosing somebody with a disease. So for it to read, "The board believes all students, including those identified, or including identified English learners," maybe I need to reread that. "The board believes all students, including identified English learners, should receive a high-quality education within the district."
Got it, instead of "those with."
Yes.
Okay, can, can I incorporate all of those things into one motion? Would you be okay with that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is everybody clear on what all those changes were? English was in there twice, we had quotes in there, ELs are going to go to EL. So there's consistency, and we're, we're going to change that, that first paragraph so that it makes sense. Okay, can you, can you restate, I'm sorry, if you'll restate for the record?
Sure, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we, in the first paragraph, change identified, or those with, excuse me, to the word identified. To strike one of the words "English" in the title. To look at the policy and be consistent when we use the word ELS, "English learners." And finally, to remove the quotation mark after "students."
Okay, motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
Ms. Agostini, why are you removing the close quote on students in the second paragraph, when the paragraph starts off with the open quotation?
Oh, you know what? Thank you, I didn't see that, so.
So I'd, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to remove that close quote part of your motion.
Actually, why, why do we need a quotation mark? I, I think that we just need to remove the whole quote. I didn't see the one in the front, I saw it after "students." But when you're defining something, I don't know why we have to have the quotation mark at all.
Okay, so do we have that friendly amendment then to leave the quotes?
I'd like them removed.
Remove both quotes is your amendment to that motion?
That's what I would prefer.
Mr. Shad, would you be okay with that?
Well, I'm not, I'm, 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 I will just say, I'm willing to vote for the balance of her motion, but because she's not accepting the friendly amendment, I'm going to have to vote against it, but I don't know how everybody else feels about it. Because, and, and I'll just say, because you are defining a phrase. So when you are defining a phrase, my upbringing in this English policy is that you have quotations when you're defining something, to set it apart from everything else.
We can check on that, just to make sure, I think we, yeah.
Okay, so, Ms. Agostini, where, I'm sorry, I want to be clear, since you're the one making the motion, on where we ended up with the quotes?
Oh. Well, you know, at this point, we can go ahead and add it in, I'm fine with that. I would like for you to check on it, though, because.
Leave it as is?
We have defined policies in the past, or defined words, they don't have quotation marks in previous policies.
So Ms. Agostini, will you just clarify, I'm sorry, for me, when you say add it in, you mean, if you'll please repeat that you want to leave the quotes as is?
I'll leave them as is and accept Mr. Shad's recommendation with the idea that it'll be looked into.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, board members, are we clear on the motion then? Any, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, if you'll raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Policy, six dot two four, policy IHBF, medical homebound instruction. Policy, item six dot two five, policy IHBG, homeschooling. Item six dot two six, IHBH, charter schools.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, and this goes back to, we've talked about consistency on the second bullet point, it has ninth grade, the number nine, and just write ninth out.
Mr. Manning, Dr. Davis, if I may.
Yes.
If you look at that second bullet point, the way it's currently written, open enrollment to any child in grades 10 through 12, or who is repeating the ninth grade, is specific to the Richland Two Charter School, per our contract with them. If you want this policy to be generic to any charter school that may apply to our district, any group wanting to start a charter school in our district, if you want it to be generic, then in grades 10 through 12, or who is repeating the ninth grade, actually would need to come out, if that's the pleasure of the board. So if you want the policy to be generic to anyone coming forward to start a charter school, that section that you just mentioned would need to come out. Right now, it's specific to the Richland District Two Charter School. As it's currently written, the second bullet is specific to the Richland District Two Charter School.
Okay, so is there anybody who would want to make the recommendation to remove that? Okay, with no motion?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
If, if, we're under contract with the Richland Two Charter School as it's written now, but if you leave it like that, any charter school who comes forward, and they want to do a K-5, they want to do a K-2, they want to do a K-12, it's not going to fit our policy.
What is your recommendation with, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Mackey.
What is your recommendation for specifically as the language should read, starting with the second bullet, the word "open," what is your recommendation?
Open enrollment to any child who resides in the district, subject to space limitations. Because right now, the way this is written, is only for the Richland Two Charter School. And if we have other schools that come along, this won't be enforceable.
Dr. Sheeley just says clarification, this does not allow the Richland Two Charter School to then go back and allow anyone to enter because of the, because of the charter we already have in place and sign with them, they are bound to that charter.
That is correct.
By allowing, by changing this policy and eliminating in grades, what you're asking or stating is that if we do not take it out, no one could start a, have a charter school in our district that did not start in grades 10.
That's right.
Got you.
So again, if I can have somebody make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move that upon recommendation of staff, the second bullet point would read as follows, open enrollment to any child who resides in the district, and subject to space limitations, period. So the highlighted portion would be stricken.
Okay, but motion's been made by Ms. Mackey, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any comment? A discussion? With no discussion, if we can have the vote, all in favor, if raise your right hand? All opposed? All abstaining? Well, I've, I've already called for a question, and we did the vote. Well, that's why I called the question. Well, that's why I called the question, called for discussion. Well, I mean, we've already all voted. We've already all voted.
The clarification was made. Clarification was made, and a motion was made, we voted.
That's why I need to know.
But it was made clear to everybody else.
Well, I'm not everybody wants to-
I know that, I know that, I know that.
So, if you can just allow me to understand what I'm voting on, so I can vote in a great way. And my question is, are you saying that if a charter school wants to be a part of Richland 2, they want to come in in the next year to, or they want kindergarten to fit?
Oops, sorry. Then they can be a part of that?
Not if, not if we leave.
No, I'm saying if we change it.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
Okay, so was your vote in the affirmative, or?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes, did it pass unanimously, then? Yes. Thank you. All right, policy 6.27, or, item 6.27, policy IHBIB, primary slash pre-primary education, child development.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have, I'm just looking for, to gain understanding. It's on the second page, when it talks about, or it starts at the very bottom of the first page, children who have reached the age of three and have delayed developmental progress that requires a special education, are eligible for enrollment in a program in accordance with their individual education program. How old are these kids when they get IEPs, and where do they get them from?
Ms. Agostini, they are three years old. We are required by federal law, if a child is identified as having a disability, or the parent suspects, or a community agency suspects, we're required to have the student enrolled by their third birthday, they're expected to start school. So we have three-year-olds starting school all year round, except for in the summer, those students start in August, but we have three-year-olds starting May 30th, if we're in session, if they turn, if their birthday is May 29th.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Item 6.28, IHCA Summer School. Item 6.29, IHCB, overseas studies slash travel programs and foreign exchange.
All right, that one is not supposed to be in there, is that correct? Dr. Franklin, Ms. Sherman, so we can move forward from that one?
So that one is removed from, okay?
It should be. Yes, sir.
All right, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, can you go back to IHCA?
All right, item 6.28, IHCA Summer School.
Yes. Down at the bottom, where it says elementary summer reading camp, I just wanted to be clear on one thing, it says that parents or guardians of eligible students will make the final decision on whether their child will participate, and I thought it was a requirement that if they're not reading on third-grade level, that they had to participate, so are we changing that now, to allow parents to make that decision?
There are exemptions, and parents do have the ability-
It is a requirement, they will retain if they don't attend, but again, parents do have that right to refuse summer reading.
It's written into the recent SUCCED legislation.
So if parents refuse, will the student be retained?
By law, we have to, yes.
Okay, and that will be shared with parents, that if they refuse, the kid will be retained?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
In fact, Mr. Newton oversees a letter that the schools give out, and they give the information, about the exemptions and-
All right, item 6.30, IHCD, advanced college placement. Item 6.31, IHCF, childcare programs.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Agostini.
And I'm trying to find the advanced placement.
Are we going back to 6.30?
Yeah, is that, I'm sorry, that was my phone going off. Sorry. But, just a question about, where it says, "The students successfully completing advanced placement course requirements and the advanced placement examinations will receive advanced placement credit in post-secondary public colleges in South Carolina or in other states in the manner specified." Do all public colleges accept AP?
Ms. Boyce, I'm going to defer to you.
I guess I have a concern, and, because my, my two kids, two college kids, went to private schools, but they received no AP credit. And, to me, this seems a little misleading, saying that they will get it, as specified in the manner from the South Carolina Commission on Higher Education, and I'm just curious how South Carolina can determine other state laws, in terms of whether or not they accept an AP credit.
Well, I don't guess that the Commission on Higher Ed can control out-of-state colleges, but most out-of-state colleges that, at least that I am aware of, Ms. Agostini, and I'm definitely not aware of every practice, they do accept them in some way. It might just be, for example, at Duke University, you still are going to have to take an English. Just which English you take would be affected by whether you came in with an AP credit. You might not take the English that students who didn't have it took, but you still have to take an English. So you might get to choose an English of more relevance to your major, for example.
All right, so actually, I think I'm going to make a recommendation for the board, where it says that, the second line, where it says, "Advanced placement examinations will receive advanced placement credit," I'd like to just change the word "will" to "may," so that doesn't guarantee that we're saying you're going to get an AP credit when you go out of state and you don't get it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, policy, or, item 6.31, IHCF, childcare programs. Okay, policy, and then item 6.32, IKB, homework.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I would just, and I guess, I'm going to need to make a motion, but I don't have it put in here, my concern is, that I would like to see that we, our teachers are not permitted to assign homework due on either weekends or holidays. And then also included in that, that, weekends or holidays. We've had an example, and I had one, when I had a foreign exchange student, and computers just had come, that we had a school holiday, there were four snow days first, then a school holiday, and I had a foreign exchange student living with us, that was required to turn something in on a school holiday. And so I had to leave my son's swim meet to drive my foreign exchange student back to Columbia, so that she could get her computer, because I wouldn't let anybody take the computer on this trip, so that she could turn in her homework. And we do have teachers that are asking students, and this happened over Christmas, that teachers in the middle of holiday break were assigning homework to be turned in. Now, I don't have a problem with teachers being gracious and saying, for example, if it was due Friday, you can have until, you know, Friday night. I'm okay with extensions, but I do want to, you know, not have assignments due on weekends or on holidays.
All right, motion's been made by Ms. Agostini, do I have a second? Or, well, I'm sorry, actually, you have to actually repeat your motion for me, please, make sure it's clear. Well, you have to say what you wanted to say.
Yes.
You want additional language added in?
Mr. Chair, I would like additional language added in, that addresses the issue that teachers are not permitted to assign homework due on holidays or weekends, and additionally added in that teachers must assign homework prior to the student leaving the class, by the end of instruction, the class period, if it's due for the following day.
All right, so that motion's been made by Ms. Agostini, do I have a second?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to that, if Lindsay is open to that.
Well, I need a second first, because it made, if there's no second, then it doesn't carry. Do I have a second? Motion fails.
May I ask a question, Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
There's no motion. Was, because we're talking about, well, the motion failed, so it could be a moot point, but whenever there is an issue that suggests that we mandate what teachers do in the classroom with regard to homework, was this, was this something that was vetted by the faculty advisory council? I mean, the motion failed, so I'm just asking for clarification.
I mean, it's something that we could have, we could have asked them to do, that would have been an option, but, yeah.
I got you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I make the motion that the faculty advisory council take that under consideration, and that there be a discussion about it?
If you would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion that the faculty advisory committee take into consideration the assigning of homework due on weekends or holidays.
Dr. Davis, if I can get you to weigh in on that?
Just as, the faculty advisory council is a unit of the administration, and, yeah, you can't make a motion for staff, for staff specifically-
So we can recommend that to you?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be, is that something you would, okay, so that's not a motion, it's been asked to do that, is that something the administration would consider, passing this policy through the advisory committee?
The motion is, the motion for the change of the policy has failed, but bringing this policy to the faculty advisory for, for their input, we'll be happy to do that and give you the follow-up in a board brief on, on the results of that, of that conversation.
And just, just speak, okay.
Let me get Ms. Mackey, and then, Dr. Holmes.
And just to be clear, the reason I asked the question wasn't to imply that we should, but if we're talking about what teachers should be doing in the classrooms, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making a unilateral decision without their input with regard to, because I've got two kids-
Right.
-who've gone to the District 2, and I've gone through homework assignments and all, you know, excessive and things of that nature, but I wouldn't want to micromanage the way the teacher conducts education in their classroom, just my personal opinion.
Okay, Ms. Mackey, all right, Dr. Holmes?
As a former teacher myself, and still working in education, I don't think it's the, and this is no reflection, I just don't think it's the board's policy to dictate what teachers do for homework in their classroom. I think that, I think that we don't have an input in the daily running of a teacher's classroom, and that's my stance on that.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments on that policy?
Mr. Chair?
Did, yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
And thank you, and I appreciate what everyone's said. My concern, again, is during the holiday, over Christmas break, halfway through, when students are required to submit homework, I don't think that's appropriate. I am fine with them having to turn it in the first day they return back, first thing Monday morning, but for families that travel and have other things going on, to require somebody to turn in something, and it's because of the electronic age. Prior to that, it would not have been an issue, the homework would have needed to be turned in on the day that the student came to school, but I think we're taking advantage of our technologies, I don't want to dictate what teachers are doing, but I'd like to work with them, because there are families out there that are concerned about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item 7.1, adjournment, can I get a motion? I have to ask y'all twice, yes?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All right, do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you all.